To the Norton School Committee meeting of Thursday, October 3rd. Norton Meter is recording this meeting if anyone else in the audience is, that huge audience over there, just let us know. All right, and let's see, the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Okay, so we will start with the minutes, I think there are a couple of changes in those.
Yes. Do you want to go first? No, you can go first. So, one of the questions I had was the funding, so under complex update, for funding $20,000 for this project, it actually wasn't for the project, it was for the
Report.
The report, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, that this
Change the word, project to report.
That the project has not been
Funded.
Funded. And then, we think that the October 30th will be the next full facility committee meeting, we think should have been September 30th.
Where was that?
Right below it.
Gotcha.
Under other business, it's Sandy Hook Promise, not Sandy Brook. I think those were the couple I had.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's okay. And then, the one that I had was under vote on Fall Town Meeting Articles, page three. When it was, discussion was held about the heat in the boys locker room at the high school, it should be middle school, I think it was middle
It was middle school.
Yeah.
So that's under the
The vote on Fall Town Meeting Articles and Capital Improvement Recommendations.
Page three.
Yeah, which as Dr. Byetta referenced.
Gotcha.
That's all I had, thank you.
Sorry I didn't catch it.
That's all right.
The last one on page six, page one, oh, on the first line, my name is Dennis, not Dennis.
How do you spell that?
What's the correct spelling?
Terry, we've known each other a long time.
It wasn't Terry.
Terry, give us an eye roll, Terry.
There's somebody though that always calls you Dennis.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Guess they're wrong, but they call me Dennis.
Is it Thomas?
Yeah, we just go Dennis.
Tom?
Just call it Dennis.
Tom too?
Yeah.
Oh, I think it is.
Oh, yes, he does, yeah.
Vote on the amendments, don't you?
Okay, so, can we get a motion to approve the minutes with the changes?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Warrants, Mrs. Cohen?
All right, I have read the, read and reviewed and approved the following warrants, September 19th, 2019, $1,400,953.23, I wish to enter them into public record.
And student representative update.
I was actually wondering if, if you'd mind going just ahead of me, so I can wait for the other app to arrive?
Absolutely.
So that we can just have some more information when we go?
Absolutely.
Very shortly.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Mr.
Good job, Stolling.
Mrs. Bennet is going to come up and be here to deliver our opening report here.
Right.
Hello, good evening, so, we're here to report a very successful opening to Norton High School for the 2019-2020 school year. We have many new staff members, including Ms. Bennet, so I'm going to turn it over to her to introduce some of the staff members and herself.
So hello, my name is Amy Bennet, I'm coming to you most recently from working in Waymouth Buffalo Schools. Over the past 10 years or so, I have worked in alternative education, both in Waymouth and then prior to that, at Greenbridge Ridge and Latin School. I started my career in Saugus. Currently, I am living in Bridgewater with myself, my husband, and my two-year-old daughter, my bio. So, on to the rest of the staff. David Casey will be teaching reading at ELA in the school's ninth-grade language-based program. He grew up in Little Compton, Rhode Island, graduated from Wheaton College with a double major in English and Philosophy, and worked as a newspaper reporter and editor before becoming a teacher. Mr. Casey loves cooking, history, football, and video games.
I'm going to interject here that we're borrowing this from the student council who put together
None of it.
You should also point out that Mr. Casey is the winner of these
All right.
Next comes Justin DeJoy, he is a teacher in the music department and is also directing the pep band. He grew up in North Andover and graduated from UMass Lowell with two degrees in music education. He has a passion for teaching marching band and going on outdoor adventures. Jade Franzin is a first-year power professional for the STEP program. She grew up in Mansfield and graduated from Framingham State with a major in sociology and a minor in psychology. Previously, she worked as an EEC teacher for infants through pre-k. Jamie Maul is a teacher for the STEP Out program. She grew up in Mansfield and graduated from Westfield State and Bridgewater State with majors in special education. She enjoys binge-watching The Office and finding Jackie Martinez is a returning teacher in the Science Department. Mrs. Martinez grew up in Norton and graduated from NHS in 2007. She attended MIT and majored in brain and cognitive sciences with a concentration in music, and then earned her master's degree in education from Pittsburgh State. She enjoys reading, exercising, and going on adventures to Eagle Railroad with her two children. Rachel Moraney is originally from Adams, Massachusetts, a small town in northwestern Mass. She has her bachelor's degree in French and in theater from Albridge University, and her master's of arts in teaching French from UMass Darwin. She's been a teacher for 25 years in several different schools, the latest one being Tonti High. She's a big sports fan and loves to travel. Bailey Morris is a teacher in the Wellness Department. Ms. Morris grew up in Attleboro and graduated from Bridgewater State with a double major in Health Sciences and Secondary Education and a minor in Special Ed. She is a high school softball coach at Attleboro High School, and her hobbies include kayaking, hiking, and playing with her black glove. She also loves watching the New England Patriots. Samantha Thai, excuse me, is filling in for Ms. Prue in the Guidance Office while she's out through November on maternity leave. She went to Emmanuel College and majored in art therapy, and then UMass Boston to study school counseling. She's from Hopkinton and has worked in Needham, Yiddick, and Mansfield High Schools. She loves to go hiking and cook and speed finger painting for events.
This is for media administration.
What does that mean?
So we have, a lot of things have been going on at NHS, I was just going to give you a few of them as far as some of the activities and committees and things that are underway. First of all, we opened this school year, I had it with class assemblies to welcome all the students, and introducing ourselves to them. All students helped organize an awesome welcome back assembly, sadly I was eliminated third in the youth teacher musical chairs competition, Mrs. Bennet was already the second runner-up, I think. Mr. Casey distinguished himself, yeah, with an acrobatic win and jumping So that was great. As an administrative team, we've been working hard to try to streamline some of the communication within the school and with the community. We've set up faculty and student Google classrooms, as well as internal calendars. Ms. Bennet is working on an activities directory for clubs, so that students can be able to participate and get involved in extracurricular life. We're providing weekly updates for staff, as well as a weekly parent newsletter, to share the tremendous things going on at Norton High School. Speaking of that, having been in the classroom so far in the first month of school, I've seen tremendously innovative practices, I've seen some embedded social-emotional learning, I've seen teachers really doing a great job building relationships with students. We launched some new courses this year as well, such as Recording Arts, Forensic Science, AP Computer Science Principles, that have engaged students in new and exciting ways. We've also had a full-year wellness course that we've begun, the curriculum is currently looking at healthy bodies and healthy choices, but it will move on to include things about mental health, substance abuse, healthy relationships. The Wellness and Guidance Department are actually working together, collaborating, in order to be able to co-teach some of these lessons. The Guidance Team, speaking of that, has worked with Special Education, the School Nurse, the School Resource Officer, and Administration to try to build in some more systematic ways to support students. With our BBC, which we have renamed the Student Support Team, SST, we've incorporated a protocol to look at the information from the Panorama Student Success Portal, which compiles data on students' academic progress, attendance, behavior, and social-emotional functioning. Our Site Council had its first meeting in September, we talked about expanding the Council to try to include more voices. We're also going to utilize the group as a mechanism to revise the School Improvement Plan, Program of Studies, and Student Handbook. We plan to look at this Program of Studies first, to think about some of the implications of new programmatic offerings that we're putting in place, as well as developing new classes. We re-instituted the Climate and Culture Committee, and we had our first meeting on Monday, to continue to look at student and staff morale. One initiative that we definitely decided we wanted to continue was the Wellness Day in the spring, which I think they had the first annual one last year, we want to continue that as a tradition. We're also going to be starting a student chapter of the Culture and Climate Committee during LLB. The early release on Friday was the rollout of our professional development. This year, we're really focusing on implementing the Vision 2022, we're addressing some of the NIASK recommendations that came from the Norton High School's two-year report, as well as exploring and expanding embedded social-emotional practices. On Friday, we completed an activity that highlighted the importance of teacher and student relationships, in order to really focus on resiliency within students. The Guidance Staff so far this year has provided a senior assembly, they've done some seminars and Lancer Learning Blocks, and provided individual consultation with college application process. Guidance has also presented a college planning night, as well as a separate college financial planning night. Over 50 parents were at both of those events. We've also hosted roughly a dozen college reps, armed service recruiters, that have met with individual students from small groups, and there are approximately 20 more college reps that are going to be here before the middle of November. The new full-time college and career specialist has presented about alternative pathways for students at a school-wide assembly. She has also been meeting with students individually, in order to try to help them meet some of their immediate professional goals, as far as jobs outside of school, but also looking towards the future. We've had some great student events thus far, including the Senior Cruise, which was a tremendous success, I think, the hippie theme, it was great, I remember dancing, I thought it was going to be cold, and it ended up being great. And we had a college fair today, I wanted to highlight today's college fair because it also prompted some unsolicited and extremely positive feedback about Norton High School students. Many of the reps took it upon themselves to seek out Norton personnel to tell them how impressed they were with students' behavior, maturity, and communication skills. We also have some upcoming events, such as PSATs for sophomores on the 16th, we're doing the Credit for Life Fair for juniors, where they go to Attleboro in order to learn about budgeting and sort of future life planning. That's on November 7th, we also have our eighth grade orientation coming up as well, in which case we'll be traveling to the middle school in order to give them an idea about the programmatic offerings we have here at the high school. So, as I said, as you may have heard through all that, it's been a busy, but exciting start to the school year. We've also had a few challenges that we're working through, but I'll leave that for another day, as far as some of the ways we're responding to those. But, it's been a tremendous beginning to the year, so thank you very much for having us tonight.
I can't believe all of that in one month. That is a lot. I just want to say two things to both of you guys, because I am a parent of a high schooler now. Seeing you guys out every morning, because I'm at drop-off and pickup, is awesome. I mean, not that, you know, high school kids may not really be that excited about it, but as a parent, I think it's great to see you guys outside greeting people as they're coming in. And the weekly newsletter, I think is fantastic.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it's very helpful. Yeah, so thank you.
We've been keeping track of how many students say good morning back to us out there. It's slowly ticking up.
It's funny you say that, because I said to my son, I give him and my neighbor a ride, and I say, "Do you guys say good morning to your principals?" And they were like, "Yeah." I'm like, "You better."
Coming in in groups, and you slowly get better as far as I'm responding.
There's been, I just want to compliment the two of them and the staff. You know, we're going through a tremendous transition, and as somebody who was a former principal who went into a transition with a veteran staff, it takes a lot, and I want to congratulate not only the Administration, but the staff of Norton High School for coming together and working together for the betterment of the students, and I appreciate that very much, and I wanted to make sure that the staff and the Administration knew that, so thank you.
We're ready now.
Yes, so I'm just, I practiced here, and then I left to get something to eat, and proceeded to drive past the high school to get to the middle school early.
Caroline, we can always make you like, towards the bottom of the agenda, and then you can stay through the whole thing.
There we go.
Glad you're here.
I'll start, you guys stole a lot of what I was going to say for the high school.
I know, that's a picture of what it was.
Yeah, college fair did happen, and that was a lot of fun, even if it was interrupted momentarily. Fire drill, for those of you who don't know.
I think we did a very good job.
Yeah, no, it actually was a lot, very, it was very smooth.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it was really good, I remember being as good, if not better, than last year's. And then, kind of a sports highlight, yesterday the girls' cross-country team made school history yesterday by staying undefeated on the season with five wins and no losses, and clinching at least a share of the TDL championship.
Congratulations.
And then also, as I'm sure most of you know, the Norton High School delegation visit to China is next week. So, I think that sounds like a lot of fun, and a few teachers, and Dr. Byetta is gone.
We're looking forward to a student delegation in the future.
I, I'm happy to nominate my sister.
It's too late for us, we have some names.
You have to make sure she comes back, though. She has to still un-catch them.
So at the middle school, learning is continuing to extend past the classroom. On September 11th, the students virtually visited the 9/11 memorial and museum, which is just incredible, yeah.
At the YEL, they had the Start with Hello campaign for the last week of September, and it was there to build a stronger, inclusive, and kinder community. Things that they did include, posting like positive sticky notes around the school, there's something called Decked Out in Purple, which I'm sure included a lot of purple. And there's also signing Welcome Sign, working across grade levels as Kindness Agents, which is a really cool name. Kindness Agents, I don't know if this sounds like
There should be a term.
It's a good way, yeah, definitely. And then, there's also something about, there's a thing called No One eats alone, which is about being in the cafeteria and just making sure that everybody's being included and has, you know, somebody to talk to during lunch. And then also, today there was a presentation from Miss Money and the Coins for the fourth graders, which was about understanding financial literacy, so that's pretty cool.
That's cute. At the JCS, the SPO ran some events in September, which included the Family Breakfast and the Annual Fall Festival. The weather was great for the festival, and it was well-attended, everyone who went had a really good time.
And then at the LGN, the Fun Run is next Friday, and they had a pep rally for the Fun Run just yesterday. And then also, the third grade field trip is on the 18th. I don't know if you had anything else about?
They also participated in the activity that the YEL did with the positivity and stuff like that.
Was there any feedback on how that?
It was great. I know the one thing that wanted to be highlighted was that at the YEL, they found a sticky that really has just pulled together the whole first month with all the ups and downs that have been going on, it just said, "The YEL is the best," and they love to see that feedback, yeah.
And a yell, a yell with a window now, which is great.
One window, one window.
As one person responded on Twitter, "Progress."
Which is true.
The college fair that was here today, silly question, but is that for all grades or is it just for like
Juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors, okay.
Very cool.
I attended that this morning, I thought it was great, and yes, there was a unfortunate fire, not drill, but an actual situation, and unfortunately, we had to evacuate the building, and we, I received comments from people just saying, well, one person said, "Well, it kind of brought me back to the old days of being a high school student," you know, because they hadn't done something like that in a while. And the comments were true, I know that Mr. Cersei and I had a discussion about how many of the folks that were here just went out of their way to make sure that not only the escorts, for example, that we have, when they come in, you know, speaking to them, talking about Norton High, welcoming them and all of that, so kudos to our students.
Excellent. Any questions?
Great job, thanks.
So, let me just sort of say before you leave, I know how busy you are as the mother of a senior, so, good luck. November 1st is coming quick, so, swirling on Common Apps and references and essays and college choices. So thank you for being here, because I know you're juggling a lot, AP classes. Cooper, I think your dad said you're doing four.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, I mean, you know, why not?
It's senior year, why make it easier?
And Caroline, I know you as well are doing very similar classes, so, thank you for putting in all this effort to really represent Norton School District as a really strong one.
We just like to set the bar high.
We appreciate it.
Big shoes to put on, actually.
Start recruiting people now.
Yeah, next year.
Bring to a meeting, it'd be like on the job.
Okay, on to AP exams, speak of AP.
AP exams. And I do want to say, both of these folks, the other first ones involved here, the main thing I asked them to do, I asked you, Caroline, step up and went to the middle school to help transition the eighth graders going to ninth, and they, Cooper was one of our star greeters, and so, you know, always impressed, despite everything else they have to do, so. Anyway, moving on, so, AP exams, so just a quick summary for 2019, we looked at, get that down, I need to work, the last three years, as you can see, we sort of kept this total number of students the same, the total of exams, actually it's fluctuated a little bit, but I think what's really important to look at is, if you look over here, we've had a 7% increase in the number of students who over the last three, over the three-year period, scoring threes or higher, and then even for fours and fives, that 7% increase continued as well. So, and a little later on, I'll talk about, we've actually increased the number of courses that are being offered, so I think that's even more impressive, because you're spreading that wealth out a little bit, and students are still standing up. So the score distribution, just for last year, you can see again, from scores one to five, that's how the distribution goes, and we really want to focus on three, fours, and fives, because in most colleges, if you score in that range, you're more likely to get either credit or have that course waived, and then you'll be able to take something more in your major or a different kind of elective, so, you know, those are the scores that we're really looking for, and we're starting to see, you know, we're seeing a real increase as we go along. There's something that AP calls the Equity and Excellence Report, and that's really something they're looking for from the high schools, and the colleges often ask us about, and that's really sort of the proportion of the entire senior class that scored three or higher during their, their time with us at Norton High School, so it would be their sophomore, senior, I mean sophomore, junior, or senior year, and then additionally, the percentage of your school's entire 10th, 11th, and 12th grade classes that took an AP exam and scored a three or higher in at least one. And you can see 44% of our seniors last year scored a three or higher, 30% of our juniors, and six, even 6% of our sophomores, we have a few sophomores that took some classes in the exams. Our graduating class, close to 50%, I mean 46% scored at least a three or higher in one AP exam. So that's, that is very impressive.
So how does that compare with the other school districts?
I think we actually, we're pretty, we're pretty competitive with a lot of the surrounding districts, I don't have the percentages, but
Well, we'll actually get a report, should be coming out, sometime in October is usually when it comes out, so you get your scores, and then they compile their own, because they actually give, they recognize high schools, and this equity thing is going to be one of the ones they're going to be recognizing people for, so
And I think we've received that twice, right?
Yeah, we've received it
At least that I know of.
Two years ago? That's the last one.
Last year?
Last year.
And we skipped the year and the year before.
Yep.
So twice in the last three years.
So, I ask because I actually thought that we usually do pretty well.
We do, we do.
Yeah, we do very well. Yeah, we do very, very well. I won't go into every single one of these, but I did put it there for your reference, it sort of looks at each of the classes that we offered last year, and it gives you the mean scores versus the state, and sort of the global scores, and then the percentage of those who scored in the three or plus range, so, this is something that department heads or the, sorry, president of the school, the academic coordinators can look at their curriculum and, you know, how they consider the scores. So that, those next two slides, I'll look at that. So really, sort of a quick summary, we've increased our AP scores, I mean our AP courses in 2019, at 17, we had nine, we had 17 last year, and we've increased it this year to 18. 100% of the Norton students registered for exams last year, and all but one took those exams, so that was everybody registered, and everybody, for the most part, took those. We had a 7% increase in the students that received a score of three or higher since 2017, as I said earlier. Last year, our students had a mean score higher than the state mean score on eight of the exams, so we did better than the eight, than the state average, not comparing our local districts. And then the percentage of students scoring three or higher was also higher than the state average on 11 of our exams. So I mean, those are pretty impressive scores, in my opinion.
Benny, can I just make a comment as well? For the physics exam, that was the first year that Norton High took that, no, I'm wrong, correct, is it?
We had skipped some, we had taken it a while.
Yes, yeah, and it's off, yeah.
It seems that AP, I mean AP Physics, AP Chem seem to rotate.
Yes, they rotate through, so it's hard to look at those comparisons from year to year.
So it's hard, and then, shout out to Ms. Godfrey, who's had AP Spanish for the first time last year, and scored, all her students scored fours or fives, nine.
Yes, amazing, that's impressive.
And then just, kudos to the History Department in particular, because they take the, the vault, the exams come from them, so they had 158 students that took AP courses, and 123 of those students earned a qualifying score of three or higher, that's the most by a single department in the 47-year history of Norton High School. Specifically, AP Psychology had three sections, we had a total of 89 students in those three sections, and 75 students earned a three or higher. So again, most of those students, and most of the colleges, that will get counted as either elective, they don't have to take, or fulfill a requirement, they actually sort of earn free course. So how does AP, just some things that are happening with AP, they've made significant changes to the AP, which is the timeline process, it used to be that we could order the exams into January, we have to order them all by tomorrow. There is an online component to that, but, you know, they, they had to get that all done, so the AP students and some of the guidance staff were running around, making sure that was done in a short timeframe. Right now, we have 100% of the students will have an exam order form, they have all taken exams this year, all students registered online, as I said, and today we have 176 students taking 355 exams. One thing that College Board did not do is they did not take on the payment process, so we are doing that, so we have to chase that down. This is actually, the 30th, it was 42%, we're down now to about, I think, somewhere around 20% still, as, by tomorrow.
The fee is still 85?
Ninety.
Ninety?
Ninety-four, and if you're on free reduced lunch, it's 53.
Okay.
So 94, 94 per test?
Per test, yeah.
So, like Cooper's taking four, it's paying that, wow.
And they made that change in the spring, how they were going to exactly do it in their timeline, so we were sending out emails early in August, I think, sort of warning families that, hey, if you have a $500 bill or a $400 bill coming, which we do have a number of these families, we wanted to try to make sure they understood it's coming quickly.
Now, if there's a family that is in need, do we have some kind of, something set up for them?
Yeah, we have a way to sort of process that, we have some payment plans that we use, and then, in most severe cases, I'd rather not talk, and make sure that everybody gets one.
I was just going to say that the multiple emails was very nice, and as a parent of a daughter
Harassing is very nice?
It was very nice, and I just did mine yesterday, so, I'm guilty.
So, you came out of that 40%.
I'm not, it is hard when it's a big, you know, chunk of money, so, but the emails, the reminders, was really great, because
Now we'll do individually, so we can stop and nail that down.
So, thank you for that.
Who regulates the fees, is it us, or is it?
So College Board sets the fees.
Okay, so I guess if you're looking at a $94 fee, but if these kids can transfer that as a college credit, it's way cheaper than a college course, I guess is how you look at it.
So, for the process, and I'm just trying to, does the student take the AP class and then test at the end, is that part of the class?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what they're learning, they apply?
They apply, so in the curriculum
Because I never take the
The exam and the curriculum is designed with the exams in mind at the end, so, you know, you get the full college kind of experience, and then you have the exam at the end, and the nice thing is you get that exam, and then, you know, have a final, so that is the only bonus, I would say.
Yes.
It's a lot of work, and these kids put a lot of time and energy into it, and you And you see there's a number of them that carry home the courses. So I'll be honest, one of the things we're trying to do is have open and honest discussions about balancing that. And even colleges are looking for that balance a little bit. So that's something we're discussing, especially at our sophomore.
Just, oh, sorry. Just in case people don't know, AP exams are created by College Board.
College Board, yeah.
And every school district, every student in the state of Massachusetts who's doing an AP class, so like AP Statistics, for example, every student is taking the same exam. So whether you're at Bishop Fian or you're at Norton High School or Mansfield High School, if you do AP Statistics, every student is taking that same exam.
But just across the nation, but not internationally.
Oh, it is, okay.
Some internationally.
Same day, same time of the day.
Same place. Yeah, I think that's the same. Same time, same.
Do they take them in-house or do they go to like a third place?
They take them here.
In-house.
We do it in-house, yeah. So we have AP, two-week process to get all of the courses. Some kids have conflicts because they run, some kids have to take exams from, you know, 8:00 to 11:30 or so, and then they have half an hour off and then they take another three-hour exam. So, or they may have a conflict and they'll have to take a makeup version of that exam later.
I think it's just important to recognize that there is clarity in that, that a private school, a school that you're paying tuition for does the same exact exam.
Exact same exam, absolutely. Yep, prep schools, it doesn't matter, they're all the same.
As a public school does.
Absolutely, yeah. And then the new registration process also allows our teachers this year to access sort of an online learning bank. The students themselves are able to get into the AP classrooms with their sample questions. There's different activities, there's study guides and so forth. So the nice thing about the online registration is it's really opened up a lot of, it provided a lot of additional supports to the staff and to the students. It's also, and that's why they say registration is earlier, so they can get those services up to them.
Now, so ninth graders don't take AP exams. If there is an interest in it, is there a way that they could apply or is it just too far over their head?
It's pretty, it would be pretty difficult for a freshman. I mean, there are always those exceptions, but for the most part, I think it would be very difficult. It's that earlier knowledge that they could need from some of those pre-practice exams courses would be required. It's all against, there's always, you know, exceptions, but for the most part, it's very not. Any other questions?
That's great.
Thank you.
Just want to thank Mr. Cersei for the job. I mean, this is really the first comprehensive report that you folks have had on the AP and what it looks like. I know that the coordinator helped him with this and assisted him with this and all that, but this is really a, truly a comprehensive. So thank you to Mr. Cersei.
Thank you.
Right on to voting to put the seal.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. I am going to present with Mrs. Martha Godfrey, who is our new coordinator of world languages here at Norton High School. And we wanted to give you some information about what the Seal of Bilinguality is and how it will impact our seniors as they think about moving forward in their steps after Norton High School.
So what it is? Oh, Professor Allopin. What it is, is an national movement that is recognizing and rewarding the students who are proficient in more than one language. So it started over 10 years ago in California. I know it's moved its way around the nation. And President Governor Baker just adopted it in Massachusetts as of 2017. And we want to implement it at Norton High School. So it's a way to recognize our students, not only the students who are proficient in a second language, but also the students who are ELL students that accomplish the proficiency in. So, Mrs. Meltzer together later for parents and students that we haven't distributed yet until we get approval from school. And also, an application has been made available to students on Google Form. So we need to do this by February 2nd and the test will be taken by the beginning of April. And we have two weeks. Unlike the AP exam that takes until July to get the results, this exam that we, they will take in the second language will give the results in two weeks. So by graduation time, they will be recognized, not only, the Seal of Bilinguality becomes literally a seal and insignia that goes on their transcripts and that is a way for colleges and employers to identify the students that are proficient in more than one language. And also, we are planning to make it a court so when students graduate, they have an extra court that makes that distinction system by the law.
And the Seal of Bilinguality is consistent across the state. So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts issues the seal to the district and it will go right onto their diploma, right onto their transcript. So that way, when they're applying to schools or showing their transcripts and saying, then they have that as a, you know, a little feather in their hat. And as Mrs. Godfrey mentioned, it's not just for our students that are taking world languages here at Norton, but also for our ELL students that maybe have another primary language and are also able to show their proficiency in English.
And they take a test?
So they do have to take a test. So this is the same information that we just gave to you about the courts, but...
All the different places about it?
Is approved, so all black states are approved? Other consideration? That's the Seal of Bilinguality Act?
There are two types of Seal of Bilinguality, which one of them is possibly an intermediate high level and then the other one would be a more advanced level, which makes it not just a Seal of Bilinguality, but Seal of Bilinguality with distinction.
So for our students, in order to prove their proficiency in their language, so for English, they have to meet all of their graduation requirements. They have to, and also pass MCAS, so with considered proficient or above. And so this is the legacy score. And as I'll present to you later in the year, there is now a different score that they have to achieve. And they also have to get a score of 42 in the access, they have to be considered proficient in the English language.
And then this is for...
This would be for the English part.
Yeah, Seal of Bilinguality. So advanced score would give them with distinction, proficient would be the regular Seal of Bilinguality.
So now this is the other way to get, to obtain the Seal of Bilinguality, which is for the students who in Norton High School, either they're taking a language or they're not taking a language, where they prove that they are proficient in a second language, then they can get, obtain the seal. And in the case of our students at Norton High School, they will be taking an exam, it's called the APO exam. And the cost is about $10 per student and we...
We will use grant funds in order to pay for that. Our students wouldn't have to do that and it's $10 per student.
Yeah. So that's an incentive for them. And also, so at this point, they will need to pass the, an exam that is called the APO exam. It's an APO, APO is a council of teaching of foreign languages. And so they need to get a score of one to five in the APO test. And in order to do this, in the language department, we're working on all taking up the test so we can better, be better prepared to teach our students. And not only is the content, just like the AP exam, it's not just the content you're teaching them, but you're teaching them how to take the exam and the time pressure and the pressure. And so it's, you know, you have to work both ways with it. And so...
So I'm sorry, that's, they would have to take four years in the same language and then take...
They don't necessarily have to take four years in the same language. It's just, our graduation requirement is two years. So if a student is able to demonstrate their proficiency in the language without taking them on to the whole year, isn't that fine? Sometimes we have students that come in, they have a little language background, they're able to go right into Spanish two or Spanish three, or French two or three based on their language proficiency. They also can use a twelving score from AP, four or five, to prove their language proficiency as well. Typically, we don't have a lot of juniors that have exams.
Yes, but we have a couple, I know, that took the AP exam last year. And she is practically a student, she's a junior, and she will be getting a Seal of Bilinguality next year, which is...
Unfortunately, it's difficult for our seniors to use that as their method for Bilinguality because we get all of the data after graduation. So those results come back too late in the year for us to really be able to use them. So they would have to take the APO instead.
But we also have the students who are seniors right now that are taking AP courses in the language. We won't be able to use the AP score, but we will be able to use the APO score, which will be administered in the...
Because the APO comes back in two weeks?
Yes.
Yes, it's really quick turnaround.
So this is the reasoning for the Seal of Bilinguality. It's really to encourage students to develop and learn in the language, to really establish their literacy skills, language diversity, identifying with people from other cultures and languages. And it's really to reward them for, you know, going above and beyond it and really helping to broaden their experiences with language.
And so we have already, students are excited about this program and they just feel like they want to go for it and they want to work out some things.
So, I don't think that puts it outside the... So the next steps is that we're, all graduating seniors will be getting a letter from Mrs. Godfrey and Mrs. Rollman regarding the Seal of Bilinguality. It is an optional assessment for students, they are not required to take it. If they believe that their language proficiency is at a level where they feel they'll be successful or if they just want to try it, they're welcome to take the test. So they will need to let us know so that we can order the appropriate amount of tests. And then they'll sit for the test and as Mrs. Godfrey mentioned, the results come back immediately. So we should order them on our board tonight or at graduation, however we see.
So you are able to do it for this, this year's...
Yes, yes. Parents, senior class will be the first one.
If you voted in the affirmative.
Correct.
And it also could be obtained by students who are attending Norton High School that are not necessarily taking the language, but maybe they have another language at home.
Right, right.
And, yeah, they have to pass.
Now, could they get this in more than one language?
Yes.
Well, it would just be the Seal of Bilinguality in general.
I wasn't sure if it was specific.
It doesn't matter if they're trialing well or...
Yeah, they don't...
Or whatever.
Some of us are trying.
Obviously not. I'm getting a talking to go right now.
I try anyway.
Yes. So we would just need for the committee to consider, Norman entering the Seal of Bilinguality program so that we can support our upcoming seniors as we should have.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second, any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Great stuff.
Okay. And, let's bring this up.
I am not presenting.
No.
I know. I'm just sharing. It's more of just informational for you, actually.
So I'm looking forward.
I know that this is so depressing for you.
Let's go.
We were very fortunate in the spring to get a grant from the state. Mr. Lazott and myself collaborated and we got almost a $48,000 grant, part of it. My part of the, it's actually the Massachusetts Safer Schools and Community Equipment and Technology Grant is what it was. So we were able to purchase the Raptor program. And basically what we did is we repurposed computers that we already had in district. And we, I shared a picture with you or a flyer because we're really just looking at the ID scanners and the badge printers as well as the software. Now, the whole point of this was to, I guess, twofold. One, we want to make sure that the people who are coming into our schools, we can identify them because oftentimes we might see people in the hallway and they didn't have a visitor badge on. And, or, you know, it could be anybody with a visitor badge, they could have just grabbed a visitor badge. So in this regard, we're able to identify, it has the person's photo, it has their name, it has the date, it has the destination that they're going to. So it's definitely a much safer, you know, in the sense that everybody knows to look for that sticker now. But it also, you know, twofold, it also scans any state-issued ID and matches or not against the sexual offender database. So in that regard as well, that's important when we have people who are walking in our buildings and, you know, going to classrooms or libraries. We have a lot of people in and out of all of our buildings. Something else that was really interesting when we were doing research was the fact that we definitely did not have a true handle or an easy way, I should say. We did know who was in our buildings, but we couldn't easily access that information. Now this collects into a database, we can actually run reports, you know, how many people are visiting the library, you know, how many people are going to the cafeteria and so forth. So, and also, if in case of emergency, if we have a lockdown, you know, Dr. Biata can from his office see what's happening, who are the visitors in the building at the middle school. Our SRO also has access. So we didn't necessarily know that without calling the principal, you know, who's on your visitor list for the day and so forth. Now we have that virtually because it's all online. We did train all of the office staff last week, all of the, you know, because basically our secretaries are the gatekeepers. And it's a very intuitive system. And I think that they all feel good about it and that we started to actually run it, a soft launch, we'll call it, just to try to work through some of the kinks. You know, we've noticed the printers, sometimes we have to adjust the printing, you know, the toner side, you know, so that we can actually see the face of the image because it's basically just scanning the picture. It's looking at, you know, name, birthday, and, you know, comparing that. But it doesn't store any of that information. We can just store the name and the picture. So if you're, let's say, a volunteer in a first-grade classroom, once we have that information, we can, you know, as a repeat person, a repeat visitor, we can just pull that up easily. But I think on the whole, it's going to be a much more efficient process and it definitely, I think people feel a little bit safer. I think there was a comment this morning at our leadership meeting also, that this in combination with the new safety, like the locks, the double locks on the doors, makes people feel a little bit more comfortable.
Do you get alerted right away if somebody has something on their record?
Well, so what happens is...
Do lights go off?
Well...
Danger, danger.
What happens is it is matching names, birthdays, as possible matches. So let's say we have a John Smith. So it would pull up any John Smith that's in the database. And what the office staff needs to do is verify. So they look at the picture, they look at the birthday, they look at the middle name and, you know, the possible match does come up red. And then they have to look at the identification and say, is this a match or no?
Oh, so you, on this screen of this computer screen, it pops up a picture?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Wow.
Yep.
That's pretty incredible.
Will you be sending out to sort of the community?
I wanted to wait until after we shared with you, but absolutely, it's important that...
Because I think parents, I think probably in the elementary schools, we know that there's more parent volunteers, but just to kind of inform them.
You would be surprised at how many people are actually, go to the middle school, you know, in and out of guidance and the nurse's office. But on a regular basis, for sure, I agree, elementary.
Just to let them know that this is a new process because the gatekeepers shouldn't have to kind of explain it or have a parent who is...
Caught off guard.
Caught off guard.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the information that you have in front of you is what's going to be sent out to the parents. We just wanted to, typically, we don't send something out without you folks hearing.
That's great.
So we did the soft launch, some glitches have come up, they're being worked on. And now it's just a matter of tomorrow morning, will be one of the first things that we do is notify the families.
We also have, we also have posters that we can put in the outside of the offices almost like kind of a warning for people. Because this will be for vendors, you know, for any visitors that are in the schools. We had, you know, tech directors meeting here and we had 35 different districts, you know, all of those people would need to be scanned in, so.
Right, so it's not going to be as easy as come in, sign, and take a badge?
Exactly.
It's going to take a little bit longer.
It could, for sure.
What's the emergency panic button?
So we haven't had that conversation yet with the SRO and Dr. Biata, but that could certainly be something, let's say that there was a custodial issue because we can put something, our own alerts in the system. It would note, it could notify immediately.
So we're not there yet, though?
Not quite yet.
Okay. That's great. Thank you for your work on that.
So what are the secretaries to do if a person comes in and they're red?
So if it comes in and they're red and they confirm it, the principals, the administrators are automatically texted or emailed or they can get a voice message alerting them and they'll be right there.
So is there a year-over-year cost for this?
So the grant, that's a great question. The grant allowed us, $9,600, it cost us through the grant, and then for recurring costs, it will be around $3,200 a year. So a third of that cost, I think it's, will be built into the budget for next year.
And that's for all five, that includes all five schools?
And central office, actually, as well. We included that.
Just to go back to Kathleen's question, when somebody does pop up, and you said that administrators are texted or emailed or whatever, like just thinking through, if somebody's there, you know, that silence of, you know, what are you doing?
We have a process.
Okay, all right.
Don't forget that a registered sex offender who's there for the benefit of their child has the right to be in that building.
Yeah.
So what we would do, what we've decided to do is follow to the protocol of the principal making the decision on the next steps, including escorting the parent. making the decision on the next steps, including escorting the parent. Sometimes people don't like to give up their ID because of stuff like that, no, I'm not giving it to you or whatever, or I forgot it maybe. So we would go, we would break back into the old routine, but there would be an escort.
Okay. And the office staff can also input information directly. So if somebody had like a passport, let's say, something that didn't fit in the scanner because it's basically all government issued, you know, like state licenses or ID cards, but if they only had a passport, they could input that information as well to check, be able to check it across the database.
And it's not something that's stored. So every time you go into the school, even if it's one day and then the next day and then the next day?
There is a, there is a manner in which a regular, let's say, volunteer, we can put them in the system. So, you know, if we know that every Tuesday that you're coming into, you know, a first grade class, we can put you into like the visitor database or should I say the volunteer database, my apologies.
Mansfield has this too. When I worked on Monday, I have a badge, so I didn't need it, but they already, I scanned in on Monday and on Tuesday my badge, there was another one waiting for me.
Waiting for you.
Yeah. Before I even got it.
That's great. Boy, our security has really changed in just a couple of years with this system, with the doors. It's a, it's a big deal for us.
It's great.
Yeah. Thanks Karen.
Thanks Karen.
Hey, superintendent's goals.
Well, you have them before you, but in general, as you know, I have to do learning goals and professional practice goals and district improvement goals. You'll be getting the district goals at your next meeting, by the way, that are based on the vision 2022 for the year. But I'm really trying to continue moving on our vision 2022 around our SEL, our college and career readiness and the teaching of the whole child. One of them is to present to you the goals and then at least update you at least twice on what's happening in the school. So it'd be a little bit more detailed report than you used to getting. And then I'm thinking probably February and then June at the two times. So that way we can maybe give ourselves some goals around that. The second one is to provide you with further information and updates on our parent and student success plans, which Jen so kindly put together for us last year as a startup and now we're actually utilizing. And also doing that more than just once. So I think we're going to do it right after the first SEL survey testing that the kids will...
Which is scheduled to go out after Columbus Day.
Yep. So once those are done, then we'll play with the data and come back and present it by grade level school and all that. Professional practice goal, I really want to do this, this has been something that's been on my radar, as you know, and that is to really get into what's called learning walks, which is really a group of us walking into the building and just observing what's happening. We're not commenting necessarily back to any staff, we're not collecting data on an individual person, we're collecting on what's the day of the student look like. And so I want to come back to you again after the first of the year and then again at the end of the year with a K-5 report and a 6 to 12 report. I'm kind of looking forward to as soon as I come back from the trip, that'll be one of the first things that I do. And then the last one is the district improvement goals, which is really about the implementation of the POG, the portrait of a graduate and six competency skills. What do they look like? What, you know, I think it was Mr. Dolman earlier tonight who said something to the effects of, you know, really seeing some of the engaging SEL within the classroom as he's done his walks. We want to take a look at that, what does it really look like in a classroom? It should be something that's comprehensive. We do a lot of it already, but I think we need to really put it to paper to show that we're doing it in classrooms around the district. And then taking all of that information in this section and actually saying, you know what, for next year, those are some of our goals. So, you know, some of the people in this room that I'll be looking to besides the curriculum instruction from Jen's office is also Jean's office because I want to really take out the support of students who struggles academically but is an old soul, a person who really gets it, somebody that you would be happy to have, be part of your team even though they're not the best athlete or be part of your classroom even though, yeah, it's not necessarily the student who's going to be raising his hand every single day or her every single day. So we want to figure out what that looks like and I think recognize students for those things more often than we are right now. I will tell you that I think the elementary schools in particular and the middle school are doing a really good job with that because of the Twitter thing and that's great, but I think we need to formalize that a little bit more than just a social media push. So you'll be hearing about that towards the end of the year. So it does require a vote of the school committee.
Any comments? Do we have a motion to accept the superintendent's goal?
So what's...
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Enrollment update.
Before I get to that, you know what one of the greatest thing about tonight's meeting was? It's like really the first time I had to do anything, at least I say nice thing about people, it kind of makes me even go back quicker. I gotta remember that for future meetings. I've given you the enrollment as of October 1st. I've done it as a comparison, thanks, thank you so much to Terry who did this, so you could take a look at year by year. So when you look at this, you'll see that there's a overall increase at the JCS of 12 students, including six local students, eight choice and actually a loss of two students in reeds. So it's a gain of 14 between those two. LGN has a gain overall of six students, eight locally, actually school trace is down two students. The hay school is where we knew we were having our first bubble go through, 28 difference, one in choice or minus 27. When you flip to the back, you have the middle school actually up three locally and up 13 total with the high number of, that's that fifth grade that actually has a good number of choice students and that's not necessarily new choice. And then the high school, which is down overall 19, 21 locally and five. And again, that's that first entering class. We now have a ninth grade and a 10th grade that are both in the 160s. And again with 14, 24 total choice students. So when you look at this, your district enrollment on the left side is 2,348 students or 27 students less. The projection on this was 116, if you remember from the NESDEX report, so that this is, that's a good thing. I would tell you that the central office this summer in August are an incredible number of registrations and it was never one, it was two and three at a time. So that's a good thing. School trace has gone up 22 students, we're at 132. Reeds is up one student. So our total is 2521 for a net loss of four students with all included. So in terms of some of the up and down of enrollment, it's, we're in a pretty decent place. We know we have that bubble going through. We've cut staffing, as you also know, we gotta make sure that folks know some of this. I wish in some instances we had it because we've seen some bubbles, but you go with what you project and then you sometimes have to eat crow. So those numbers were shared last night at ThinkCom as well.
Any questions? Is there any comments?
Nope. Nope. It was a very positive meeting on the presentation and to be quite honest, just appreciation of the numbers and the information and that we were coming back for what we said we were coming back. So I haven't heard anything since.
Ad hoc financial?
Yes, hey, so we met at deadline. This was a ton of work and I want to thank my staff, my administrators and the, including the building principals, which is one of the areas where this starts. I also want to note that although this is, this was something that we spent a lot of time at the central office talking about what do other districts have, which was one of the things that we were act as comparable and don't have that maybe we have, which we don't find a lot of that. You know, it looks like a whopping number, but that whopping number includes 12.8 million dollars worth of capital. So when you look at it, it's about $1.2 million in operational and 2.5 in personnel.
I didn't get that piece.
A lot of the personnel is actually things we're going to be having to add over the next few years because of services delivery required to students. So we broke, tried to break this down in the best way that we could. A couple of things that are also important is we have put together a $560,000 increase in bus transportation, which means no fees for busing. We have tried to cut back some of our other fees, not totally, but cut them back. We've put together those material areas, facility areas, furniture areas that are needed. As you know, that some of this stuff is already in our capital plan, so it's not new to any plan we've worked in the past. And I think we've also tried to take a look at some of our technology things. Technology is not stopping, it's continuously moving. So, you know, the concern is we have over $700,000 in school choice money in our current budget. And so, you know, we have to take a look at sustainability, this is Denez's point all the time. So we have to really make sure that we are sustaining that, you know, we're at, with next year's number, we're going to probably have in new funds for next year in the vicinity of $700,000 or more when we count the specialized services and everything else that we get to count for. We can't just move that money into the operating budget, that's, it's not feasible, we know that. So I do think that capital is the way to go with some of this stuff, some of this is, and I can't remember the rules for capital off the top of my head because I always get confused with my hometown, but it's either five, at least five years of life or more or it's 10 years, I can't remember which one it is, different communities doing it different, I'll have to clarify that for you. But we tried to put together those things that are things that we see are either coming in the horizon for us or are things that just don't have some of the layers that we have. Your biggest problem as a district, in my opinion, our biggest problem as a district is we just don't have that middle layer of support for classrooms or management. So we compare ourselves with some of the local districts, you have an assistant superintendent, you have at least two to three to four directors for a district, our size underneath those positions or coordinators underneath that. This all falls to central office or the building principal. So that's a major thing, so that's personnel. I also looked at where the visioning is and so I did look at a coordinated position of looking at grants and looking at adult education and looking at career and technical education. Now when you look at career and tech ed, I don't want you to think about, you know, grandpa's vocational school because number one, they're no longer that. One local vocational school is about to go out for bid on a major renovation addition for a brand new, literally theater area, which is going to affect us if we're not doing theater at the light that we should be doing it. So what kind of CTE programs can we start to dabble in? And so that would require somebody with some expertise, that's not just your typical classroom teacher or administrator. As you know, as most of you know, I spent a lot of time in bulk ed, so I know a little bit about it. But you need the time to put together, where do our kids want, what are they looking to do? Just this week, we met with our educational alliance group at lunch and one of the things that came out was our college agreements. For example, we currently are about to take off with Boston Agricultural College, which were one of the fastest growing colleges in the country, which really has six or seven different, not agricultural, architectural, excuse me, architectural, thank you.
Boston doesn't have a lot.
No, it doesn't. Architectural, sorry to be, excuse me. Boston Architectural College, BAC, on six, seven different areas. And our students can take courses with them starting this January for $100 a credit. You know, three credit courses would be $300 and those are online, can be provided right here on campus with a college professor. So when we know we have kids who are interested in that area. And that includes things like design around architecture with an emphasis on landscaping, that type of stuff. It's very specific to where areas that kids are interested. So you'll be seeing some of that coming forward. So it's always going to be controversial because we're always going to be the biggest budget. So we're always going to have the biggest number, we're always going to have the biggest need because we have the biggest number of employees, we have the biggest number of buildings, we have the biggest number of expenses. It's that simple. So this is not a one-year request per se, and I think that's the way we looked at the ad hoc recommendations. It's, it's to give a little bit heads up of this is what's coming, this is also some of the things we need sooner than later. But some of this stuff is requirement stuff that we know is coming down the line for us. So feel free to take it apart and when we meet again, we'll be discussing it further.
Well, to be, to be clear too, this is the ultimate wish list, correct?
I don't like calling it a wish list because I took, there's millions of dollars, not even.
Right.
What I looked at is, I looked at these folks and the principals and I said, what do you need that you don't have if you could have it?
Right.
Because A is having to do it and it's, it's never going to be done the way it could be done. For example, with the growth in social emotional issues that we see in the schools, somebody might say, well, why did you put a nurse in there? You have five nurses, one for building. We can't get some of our assessments done with our students at the elementary level with the number of things that are happening specifically between 11 and 1, where we have multiple students, not one or two, coming down for medication, students who need specific attention to medication. So having a nurse lead that would kind of be throughout the district would allow for us to take care of those issues more. Some people would say, well, why would we need that? Because we have more medical issues in our schools on a day-to-day basis than we've ever had.
Not even necessarily in medical.
As an example.
If you have a child in crisis and the nurse is involved, then doesn't the kids need the medicine or do they need secondary time?
Right, right, right. We look at, we look at things as our, with our SEL, we've been talking about counseling. Again, in this, in these proposals, we have an additional. We know it's coming, we know we're going to need it, we need it today. You know, one of the things that concerns me about Norton High School is it's in dire need of a second assistant principal. It has been for years. And with the amount of SEL and all of those issues of vaping that are taking place, it just sucks up an entire report, takes an entire day with one administrator to be able to handle because chapter 222, you're just not allowed to suspend students without looking at alternative means, without having parental input. You can put out somebody on an emergency suspension for up to two days, but that may not get us to where we want to be. And that doesn't make Norton High School, that's the word I'm looking for, any different or worse than anyone else. I, you know, for those of us that send, that send the kids here already. But it's things like that that we're really concerned about. It is some of those needs. We have a little joke, inside joke about what we call some of our yard, classroom yard sales. It's kind of a little bit of a, teachers are utilizing alternative means and alternative seating and alternative this and that for the classroom, but they're doing it on their own, trying to pick up stuff as they can. That's not equitable from classroom to classroom, it's just not equitable. So we have furniture requests, which by the way is also on our capital plan, so, and a whopping amount of this, as you know, is the athletic complex, that's part of this cost, so.
So this, this was created, was it Bill Govea who was at that meeting with the selectmen, the finance committee and us? And he was saying that we should really put together our true budgets instead of trying to pigeonhole the amount that we think we're going to get? What do we really need in order to function? Is that, is that where this came from?
Yes, and it comes down to the functions, the competition. It's really easy to say, well, we don't need to do that, except when you stop to lose 40 bodies, 50 bodies and they're going somewhere else because you can't offer it.
Right.
And I'm not talking private schools. I've informed you before, again, students should go to vocational schools and Aggie schools, I'm not an anti, but when they're building, brand new buildings at 100,000, 100 million dollars and all you get as a town is a $70,000 bill with no vote, no meaning and you know that more students are potentially going to go there if we're not offering competitive areas. We're not going to be the Aggie, we're not going to be the Volk, but we do think that the area of STEAM and Karen, who's been one of our biggest pushes of this, we, we already feel like we're falling behind and we need to do something. So that, that stuff is in here.
So I think the, the purpose of the ad hoc too, I mean, Denez and I are on that committee and, you know, the reason why we asked for this exercise to be done was prompted by, by Bill's comments at that last, last meeting that we had last spring. But it's also a couple of other things, right? So we're trying to come up with a town-wide plan because I'm not sure we've ever really had one. We've never really looked at, you know, part of the ad hoc goal is to no longer have schoolside, townside. We are a town, we are one, and so the school is a department, no different than highway or parking rack or, you know, council on aging. So that's one, is to kind of get us all talking about what is the common goal of our community. So we asked for this because this allows us to see what, what is really needed to make us comparable to surrounding towns, surrounding communities. And then we take it a step further and look at, you know, our budget, budgets now for every department, take away using the free cash that we use every year and how far are we really behind? So not only on these kinds of things, but our actual budget right now. So it's kind of a deep dive into every single department and really going through this and trying to come up with a plan on how to move us forward.
Are there other departments that are taking this on as well or is this...
Oh, every department, we have everything. The due date was yes, yesterday?
The first.
The first, was that yesterday?
Two days ago.
Oh, two days ago, okay. And we have all the information that we need and so one of them, obviously the ad hoc is compiling everything and putting it into a spreadsheet and then the ad hoc we're meeting next week and we're going to start to go over this and really get involved.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we didn't do this on our own. This was prompted by a meeting that we all of us had in on.
Right, so that, and that's something that we're going to talk about at our next joint meeting is our next all joint meeting. Because I think those are important to have.
And one of the other things too is that there is any, any changes, for example, October And one of the other things, too, is if there is any, any changes, for example, October 21st, if there's capital items that have changed and added, and they're already on this list, then we would inform the ad hoc that it changes a number, to the good or to the bad. In most cases, we hope to the good, so, as an example.
All right, other business?
Just want to, and I'm giving you the ACG, our OPM, letter on the timeframe for the espresso situation at the Yale Elementary School, and I'll recon, I'm meeting with the teachers tomorrow, I've been asked to meet with them and the Mass Teachers Association, and they're specialists, so I'll be going into that. I've informed them that I will take questions, receive those questions, and then respond, so that we're hopefully talking the same thing. There's a lot of interesting information that's been put out there by others. The second thing I'd like to inform you of is a number of us are going to be at the November, on November 7th, down at the joint conference, so I would like to postpone both the 7th of November and the 21st of November, and have only a 14th of November meeting in November. Of course, that's your call.
We'd need a vote on that.
Yep.
So we'd be getting rid of the 7th, you said?
And the 21st.
And only having November 14.
Okay, I can do that.
Yep, that's fine with me.
So we don't have one on 14th, now?
Right.
Correct.
Where would that one be?
Yeah, what we do in schools, because we have.
Say again?
We're doing a world tour.
Yeah, so that we would end up, I think it's, the next one is the hay, but that's going to have to be moved, and then it'll be the LGN. So it'd be, the LGN would be in November.
On the 14th.
Correct. Which actually sets, is only a week difference than typical for us. We usually go into November, and then we just go right into middle school, which we've already are going to have to go do because of the hay.
Next time we're not doing the hay?
No, we are doing the hay, but it's going to have to be at the middle school.
Okay.
So just the meeting spot changed?
Correct. The hay will be the topic.
So October 17th is at the middle school, October 17th?
Yeah, the October 17th will be at the middle school. It'll be the, the Yale Elementary School, because we, that, that's the cafeteria, is, I mean, excuse me, the library is being used.
So then we're getting rid of the 7th?
Right, and we're meeting on the 21st for town meetings. You'll be up 17th and the 21st for anything that comes up, and then you have, so you would need a motion to postpone the 7th and 21st and add the 14th. Excuse me, I'm sorry?
Do you hear anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, canceling them, thank you for that. Cancel 11/7, cancel 11/21, add 11/14.
Okay, so do we have a motion to cancel the 7th, cancel the 21st, add November 14?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
And where do we, location?
So the location for the, for that one would be the middle school, because we, excuse me, the LGN.
LGN.
It'll be the LGN.
And do we have to do anything with the spot for the next meeting? Would I have to motion to move that meeting from one location?
No, because we just will take them, no, not even post it, but we, we have your dates, where you're located, it's just a matter of how we, we know it. You didn't take a vote according to where the meetings take place, we always add the place out.
So the, just the, all right, and so then our December 5th meeting was be at the middle school and then from the algebra.
Correct, correct, yep.
I just had two quick things, just a reminder that the, I'm blanking on my name, but committee, Monday night's meeting.
Charter?
Charter. The charter commission has asked me to go, and if anybody else wants to join, it will be Monday, 9:00, 7 o'clock. I think I wrote it in email, those are going to be the questions that we ask, I think they're pretty straightforward, but if anybody has anything they want me to add in there, whatever, shoot me an email if you can't make it. And also, do we, I had a question, do we have firemen who visit the elementary school classrooms?
I wouldn't know that, but I mean, I know we have offices in town, both firemen and police officers that visit classrooms, lunch with a child, visit, I don't know.
I, I'm only saying, because I, like I said, I just worked in Mansfield this week, and there were firemen who came in and just gave like a little cute, little blurb to the kids about, do you, I know we practice here, do you practice at home, never go back in for your pet, you know, just the normal.
Fire prevention week.
Yeah.
I feel like we've, I feel like we've had that, right? Because I feel like I've seen things on Twitter and stuff.
I would like to see that, because the kids were, they, first of all, they were so attentive, they were so cute about it, you know, and I think it was good for them to hear, you know, don't go back in for your pet, we have special clothes, we'll go in and get your pet for you, and, you know, I mean, they seemed to really enjoy it, so I would like to look into.
I know when the Yale had their career days the last two years, one of the firefighters was there.
Yes.
And the kids, because the way they did, they changed the structure, so the first year was kind of like an open-ended.
Right, yep.
Would be a do, because I actually participated in that one.
Yep.
Then the next year was more the kids could go table to table.
Yes.
And I believe police and fire were where the kids were.
Yeah, yeah. But this was something where they just, they were there all day, and they just moved from classroom to classroom and just spoke to the kids, so I don't know how we do that or how we implement it, or it's got any other interest?
I think Karen was, I think with it being fire prevention week, there was probably some communication that took place, like we do with the high five and all that.
Yeah.
So.
I just, that was informative, especially for the little ones.
One more thing, I will, I will look into that about either future or making sure we're on the calendar in the future, if not doing it before them. Just one more thing, we, we have, we made a slight change with the capital plan, because we have the paramecian boards that were in the operational, so they're going to be moved to capital per my and Mike Yunus' discussion last night, which brings our request for the operational budget down to 400 and.[1738.11]